If you were not a registered voter in Whitman, you must obtain the permission of the moderator to be present here. You must sit in the designated section, which is over here to my right, unless permission is granted to sit on the floor. You may not vote, and you must remain silent during any voice vote. You may not speak unless the moderator has given you permission, and then you may speak only on the article which you have been given permission to speak on. We ask also that you please wear your mask when you're not seated and maintain social distance throughout the meeting. Entrants was necessarily restricted to the gates you came in through, but all gates around the field will be open at the conclusion of the meeting. Please wear your mask and maintain social distance as you leave the meeting. Okay, we have a count of 165 voters present which reaches the quorum, so I will call the meeting to order. As we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, I would encourage us all to think about the words of this. We've recited this by rote since we were children, most of us, but in given today's environment, I think it's important we reflect on the words of this. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like you to please remain standing for an opening prayer. Pastor Crystal Gardner from United Methodist Church is here. Pastor Gardner.
Let us pray. Wise and loving One, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today and for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself and a measure of health in the midst of COVID-19. Thank you for those on the front lines of this pandemic and for all of the following mandated safety precautions. Thank you for allowing us to be involved in useful work of the town of Whitman and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities and positions. Bless our agenda to be fruitful and for the common good. Grant that all persons involved in decision-making have ears to listen to the people they serve and wisdom to act for justice. Give them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our time and the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. Grant patience to all who want to voice concerns or comments and assure them that their comments are important and will be duly noted and responded to either today or at a later date. Touch each person under the sound of my voice and continue to bind the Whitman community together with a court of love that cannot be severed. In the name of the Creator, Sustainer, and Redeemer, amen.
Thank you. Please remain standing for a moment of silence for the following deceased town employees: Dennis Lacerda of the Whitman Police Department, Nancy Hinckley, Whitman Hansen Regional School District, Jay Freeman of the Whitman Recreation Commission, Robert Schmidt of the Whitman Fire Department, Phyllis Titterington of the Whitman Hansen Regional School District, Laura Haas of the Whitman Hansen Regional School District, Doris Corliss of the Whitman Hansen Regional School District, Joan Tucker from Whitman Town Hall, Deborah Jefferson from Whitman Hansen Regional School District, Robert Byron from the school district, Margaret Gockwin, also of the school district, Jean Candito, Whitman Public Library Trustee, Dorothy DeCosta, Whitman Hansen Regional School District, and Helen Vorden, Vordren, of the Whitman Hansen Regional School District. Thank you. Will the tellers please come forward to be sworn? And will the clerk please read the warrant?
Good evening. Annual Town Meeting Plymouth SS to either the Constable of the Town of Whitman. Greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Whitman, qualified to vote in elections and town affairs, to meet in Whitman Hansen Regional High School, 600 Franklin Street, Whitman, Massachusetts, on Monday, the 22nd day of June 2020 at 7:30 p.m., then in there to act upon the following articles, Articles 1 through 39. And you are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting up attested copies thereof in not less than eight public places in the town, seven days at least before the day of said meeting. Here or fail not and make due return of the warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk at the time and place of holding said meeting, given under our hands this first day of June 2020. Dr. Carl F. Kowalski, Chairman; Daniel L. Salvucci, Vice Chair; Brian J. Brazanson, Clerk; Randy G. Lamatina, Jr., Member; Justin Evans, Member. Warrant attestation. I hereby certify that by virtue of written warrant, I have posted eight copies of said warrant in various sections of the town with two copies in each precinct dated June 4, 2020, by Constable Christine M. May Stafford. And then I have a few declarations. This is posted by, well, given to me by Michael Seeley, Moderator, Town of Whitman, Massachusetts, dated July 16th. Oops, sorry, wrong one. Sorry. Dated June 15th at 12 o'clock p.m., First Declaration of Recession and Continuance of Annual Town Meeting. In accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 39, Section 10A, as amended by Chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020, and after consultation with the town's public safety officials and Board of Selectmen, I hereby issue the First Declaration of Recession and Continuance of the Annual Town Meeting, postponing the Town of Whitman's annual town meeting from June 22, 2020 to July 8, 2020 at 7:30 p.m. at the Whitman Hansen Regional School, Hanson, Mass. I have determined that this postponement is in the public interest due to the ongoing public health and safety emergency caused by COVID-19 pandemic. Please be advised that this is, this, oh, sorry, that is currently my intention to issue a second postponement on July 7, 2020, further postponing the town meeting from July 8 to July 27, 2020, to be held at the same time and location stated above. However, this information is subject to change as the ongoing public health and safety emergency develops. Notice of any further postponement will be posted in the same manner as this first declaration, signed by Michael Seeley, Moderator, posted in eight sections of town, two in each precinct, by Constable Christine M. May Stafford on June 16, 2020. And then there's the Second Declaration issued by Michael Seeley, Moderator, Town of Whitman, dated July 7, 2020 at 12 p.m. In accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 39, Section 10A, as amended by Chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020, and after consultation with town's public safety officials and the Board of Selectmen, I hereby issue the Second Declaration of Recession and Continuance of the Annual Town Meeting, further postponing the Town of Whitman's annual town meeting from July 8, 2020 to July 27, 2020 at 7:30 p.m. at the Whitman Hansen Regional High School in Hanson, Mass. I have determined that this further postponement is in the public interest due to the ongoing public health and safety emergency caused by COVID-19 pandemic. And the Final Declaration issued by Michael Seeley, Moderator, Town of Whitman, dated July 16, 2020 at 12 p.m. In accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 39, Section 10A, as amended by Chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020, and after consultation with the Town of Public Safety Officials and Board of Selectmen, I hereby issue this Third Declaration of Recession and Continuance of Annual Town Meeting, further postponing the Town of Whitman's annual town meeting from July 8, 2020 to July 27, 2020 at 6 p.m. at the Whitman Hansen Regional High School in Hanson, Mass. I have determined that this further postponement is in the public interest due to the ongoing public health and safety emergency caused by COVID-19 pandemic, signed by Michael Seeley, Moderator, posted in eight sections of town, two in each precinct, by Constable Christine M. May Stafford, dated July 16, 2020. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to go over some rules for the procedures that will be following this evening. All voters must be sitting in the designated sections. Unless voted otherwise, all votes will be by voice vote. If I cannot tell or if a vote is immediately questioned by five voters, a standing count shall be taken. When we get to Article 2, we'll take a recess. We may do that shortly, actually. And you'll have an opportunity to look over Article 2, which is the budget. When we get to that in the meeting, I will ask if there are any question on the budget line items as I go through them in 25 line segments. If you have a question about a particular line item, please shout out "question" and the number of the line item. After we go through all of Article 2, I will reread all the question line items. All line items that are not questioned will be voted on as the Finance Committee recommends in your handout. We will then have a discussion and votes on each of the questioned line items. Massachusetts General Laws, Articles 1, 2, 3 of the town bylaws and Roberts Rules of Order govern the running of this town meeting. All amendments must be in writing and signed. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand and be obvious. We have a large spread out crowd here this evening. After being recognized, you can stand and go to the nearest microphone. We have one here. We have one here. We also have one, I believe, a roving microphone if you are unable to get up to the microphone. State your name and your address. Confine your comments to the article or question that's on the floor. And you may not speak on the same question more than once until everyone who has not been heard has had a chance to speak. I want to thank you for attending. This is important business, essential to the functioning of our town. My goal is to complete all business tonight, and I ask that you remain for the duration of the meeting. In the event that we cannot finish tonight, I ask that you return tomorrow night. I want to thank the Finance Committee, who's seated over here to my left. They have put in many, many hours working with the town administrator, the department heads, and others to study each of the articles that pertain to finance and give their thoughtful and considered recommendations on each to this meeting. The committee's recommendations on each applicable article are found in the warrant. These people are volunteers who perform this essential service to the town. Please join me in thanking them for their service. Also, special thanks in this very unusual year to the Whitman Hansen Regional School District for making this outdoor venue available to us and to the Board of Selectmen, the town administrator, the town clerk, our IT department, our volunteer checkers, and many other town employees and departments who dealt with the unusual circumstance and challenges associated with holding our town meeting here. Are there any questions regarding procedure this evening? Okay. Mr. Kowalski from the Board of Selectmen would like to say a few words.
Thank you, Michael. As the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, it's my pleasure to welcome you and to thank you for coming tonight. It was, it's a difficult time in this, in this country and in this town and in this state. And it feels like I ought to be introducing a band and that this would be a summer concert. I expect to be asking Shanannar or Dale and the Duds to perform, but they're not here. I just want to let you know that it took some courage and commitment for you to come to Town Meeting this year, given the pandemic and given the heat of the night, heat of the night, of course, and also given some far-reaching choices to make regarding the regional school district, to note the revised regional agreement, the so-called 50-50 compromise, and the middle school feasibility study. Of every faith that we'll weather those storms as we usually do and clearly follow the values that were described in our citizens' survey last year. Rosemary Connolly made a statement about following both her head and her heart at last week's Finance Committee meeting. And it brought to mind something that has meant a lot to me for over 20 years. Still strikes a chord today. I was on a sabbatical for a Mass. affiliate at the University of Texas in Austin, and I came across a passage by a man named Oscar Mink. He was talking about how to manage change and that life was about change and the distinction between management and leadership is a difficult one to make sometimes. I've known some managers that couldn't lead a pack of 100 dogs to meet. I've known some very good leaders who couldn't manage a two-car funeral procession. But Oscar Mink had some things to say about that. He said that life, all life, is about how we manage change. And the key to doing so can be found in The Wizard of Oz. We all remember The Wizard of Oz. I remember when I saw it, I was 10 years old, and in every Irish family, there's a maiden aunt that takes care of the little kids and takes them to the movies. And my Aunt Muriel took my little brother Bobby and I to see The Wizard of Oz, and we were psyched. We were going to see the best movie of all time, she said. And we're sitting in the movie theater and we're all excited, and then this black and white movie came on, and we both sank in our seats. We were totally crushed. But then all of a sudden, something happened. Massive change, tornado, and the movie became technicolor. And Dorothy met three strange people. She met a scarecrow and a tin man and a lion. And they all had qualities that they were missing that they needed to find. They had to find a brain. They had to find a heart. And they had to find courage, and they didn't think they had it inside themselves. They thought a wizard could give it to them. The wizard couldn't. We found out that the wizard was a fraud sort of behind the curtain. They found out that they had these qualities in themselves. We do too. Whatever we accomplish tonight, whatever we accomplish this evening, will undoubtedly mean changes in the lives of Whitman's citizens and particularly its younger ones. And if we do what we usually do, we will find, we will manage tonight's meeting well, and we will lead the way for our partner town to do the right thing on Wednesday night at its meeting. We'll talk about it, but we'll eventually, I hope, support the amendment to the agreement and the school budget request. We have the brains. We have the heart. And we have the courage within each of us to do so. So let's, tonight, use our heads, follow our hearts, and act with courage. I also need to take just a minute to acknowledge someone here who has shown brains, heart, and courage for decades of service to this town. His name, as you well know, is Frank Linum. This may be his, this may be his last town meeting as the town administrator. So I want to take this opportunity in front of all of you to thank him for the years of strength, dedication to duty, fierce loyalty to the Whitman that he loves. And I have truly been blessed to have worked with him for many years, and I will surely miss him. Thank you, and let's have a good meeting.
Thank you, Carl. And also, I would like to say a few words is Richard Anderson, who's the Chairman of our Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight in this very unusual location to talk very briefly about the Finance Committee's activity and focus throughout this past year and offer a perspective of how we arrived at our budget recommendations. First of all, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank our town moderator, Mike Seeley. Among his thankless tasks is to somehow find and appoint members of this community to serve on the Finance Committee. I truly believe he has assembled a group of individuals that represent the diversity of this town better than any before it. I say this not because our work has been easy and certainly not because we always agree what we think is best for Whitman. Some of you may have had the opportunity to see a Finance Committee meeting on Whitman Hansen Cable Access. For those who have not, trust me, there is no shortage of passion, drama, intrigue, scandal, and action. There are nine members of this board, and as Chair, I will always insist that there are nine voices being heard. Vice Chair Dave Cudaro also serves as the Chair of the Building, Facilities, and Capital Expenditure Committee. The BFCEC will begin the process of developing a comprehensive capital improvement plan this summer. Ralph Mitchell and Chuck Colby are the senior members of this committee and bring a wealth of knowledge from their long-term service. Chuck also serves as a liaison to the South Shore Vote Tech. As newer members, Rosemary Connolly, John Galvin, Al Cafferty, and Kathleen O'Tina have been instrumental in bringing new ideas and perspectives. Rosemary is focused on bringing open government and using holistic lens to view budget planning. Al has been very outspoken on holding the line on expenses. Kathleen brings a unique analytical ability and a comprehensive educational experience and is our recently designated media outreach representative. John Galvin has been our link to the 21st century through his involvement with Whitman Hansen Cable Access and hosting all of our virtual meetings on the Zoom platform. He has also developed a very useful spreadsheet to help us demystify the revenue forecasting process. And finally, Scott Lambiaseu, who was recently hired as Town Administrator in Abington, brings a necessary perspective as a former Selectman here in Whitman. I'm going to wrap up by saying there will be some difficult decisions before you tonight, and there is a lot of work that needs to be done. This Finance Committee has met for the past 11 months right through the challenging constraints of this pandemic to review every aspect of this budget. The recommendations on the town meeting warrant you have in your hands is a result of that commitment. Ultimately, the decisions that will chart the course for Whitman's future are yours to make. Thank you for taking the time to be here tonight.
Thank you. Since we still have a number of people who are waiting to check in or are waiting to get into the meeting, what I'd like to do now is take a few-minute recess for you to have an opportunity to look through Article 2, which is the proposed budget for the town for the fiscal year, and to select any questions, any line items you might want to question. Also, people sitting in the back, we have seats up front here. It's going to make vote counting a lot easier if we can sit in the seats here, at least until we run out of seats. So if you could do that, that would be great. But let's just take a few minutes to read through Article 2 and give some more people a chance to come in. Okay, folks, the time being 6:30. I'd like to get started again. We have the setting sun behind us, which doesn't care how long we wait. I'll entertain a motion for Article 1. A motion and a second to see if the town will bring in their vote for the following town offices: one moderator for three years, one town treasurer-collector for three years, two Selectmen for three years, one Assessor for three years, two PK-12 Whitman Hansen Regional School District Committee members for three years, two Department of Public Works Commissioners for three years, two Public Library Trustees for three years, one Whitman Housing Authority member for five years, one Planning Board member for five years, one Board of Health member for three years, and to choose all other necessary officers. The polls for election of officers will be opened at Town Hall at 9:00 on the forenoon on Saturday, 16th of May, 2020, and kept open until 5:00 in the evening, both of which days will constitute the annual meeting, and this call is issued in accordance with the town, with the vote of the town passed January 29, 1902. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor of accepting Article 1, say aye. Opposed, say no. Article 1 carries unanimously. The following articles are requests that pertain to the fiscal year of 2020, which concluded on June 30, and the article numbers are preceded with a P. These articles are expenditures or approvals that take effect immediately on vote. Article P1, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $20,000 from free cash to reimburse the Whitman Hansen Regional School District for the construction of a parking lot near the rear of the Duval Elementary School or take any other action relative thereto. Have a motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor of Article P1, say aye. Opposed, no. Article P1 is passed unanimously. Mr. Linum.
Excellent. Thank you. For the benefit of the people who are here at Town Meeting, this warrant was originally prepared with the intention of holding a meeting on May 4. Some of the language here doesn't necessarily apply, including the preface we read about the articles pertaining to June 30 of '20. Further on, you will see a note that the following articles refer to 2021. For the sake of clarification, all of these articles refer to the current fiscal year. Thank you.
Article P2, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $45,000 from free cash to reimburse the Whitman Hansen Regional School District for the installation of a chairlift at the Duval Elementary School or take any other action relative thereto. Motion and a second. Discussion. Seeing none. All in favor of Article P2, say aye. Opposed, no. Article 2 is adopted unanimously. Article P3 is withdrawn. Article P4, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $15,000 from free cash to engage a consultant to advise the Board of Selectmen in developing a multi-year strategic operating plan or take any other action relative thereto. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor of Article P4, say aye. Opposed, no. Article P4 is adopted unanimously. Article P5, to see if the town will approve the $850,000 borrowing authorized by the Whitman Hansen Regional School District for the purpose of paying costs of feasibility study to understand the best solution to the physical and educational deficiencies of the Whitman Middle School located at 104th Avenue, Whitman, Massachusetts, including all costs incidental and related to the study set for which the district may be eligible for a school reconstruction grant for the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, and the MSBA's grant program is a nonentitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any study cost the district incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the district and its member municipalities. Any grant that the district may receive from the MSBA for the study shall be set forth in a feasibility study agreement that may be executed between the district and the MSBA. Motion that the town hereby approves $850,000 borrowing authorized by Whitman Hansen Regional School District for the purpose of paying costs of the feasibility study to understand the best solution to the physical and educational deficiencies of the Whitman Middle School located at 104th Avenue, Whitman, Massachusetts, including all costs incidental and relative thereto. The study set amount to be expended under the direction of the Whitman Middle School Building Committee and for which the district may be eligible for a school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, and that the town acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a nonentitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any study cost the district incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the district and its member municipalities. Provided further than any grant that the district may receive from the MSBA for the study shall be set forth in the feasibility study agreement that may be executed between the district and MSBA. The amount of borrowing authorized by the district shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the feasibility study agreement that may be executed between the district and the MSBA. We have a motion. Motion and a second. Discussion. Yes, sir. Please come forward to the microphone, sir.
Rob Glover, 35 Crescent, District 3. So my question is in regards to the feasibility study. And I don't have an understanding if we did a bake-off, if you will, for whoever is going to execute that study. Do we check multiple areas? $850,000 is a lot of money. Have we tried to do, find out if the study was happening at a lower cost?
Okay. Mr. Small?
That is an estimate. It will have to go up to bid per Mass. law, but there are a list of architects, people that are approved by MSBA, as they'll be participating in reimbursement with this as well.
So $850 is an estimate, but it could go higher.
Could go higher, could go lower.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions on Article P5? Ma'am?
Cindy Landerville, 20 Harrods Street. I have a question. What, how is this going to affect our taxes? And when will we know? I mean, we're voting $850,000, but we still don't know.
Mr. Linum.
The feasibility study is the beginning of an assessment to determine whether to repair or replace the middle school. The $850,000... The 850,000 is what's estimated to be needed from MSBA. Over three years, if we were to pay it down over three years, it would run approximately 302,000 a year, and it would probably increase your taxes by 30 to $35. I need to look at my notes. It would be approximately $37 a year, because this money is reimbursable unless we choose not to go forward with the project. The bigger issue here is that this feasibility study will lay the groundwork for whatever needs to be done at the middle school, and at that point, we will be coming back to the town for both a vote to fund the project and an election to allow us to tax for the amount of money that it will cost to do that project. So this is a very preliminary part of it. This will tell us what it's going to cost to build a building, and it'll give us an idea of what support we will have from MSBA to do that work.
What about grants? May even.
The grant is MSBA. It'll be roughly 52% of whatever we spend.
57.
It's a new number for me. Can we get it up to 60?
Other questions on Article P5? All right. Seeing none, then we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of Article P5, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article P5 is adopted unanimously. Article P6, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $54,806 from sewer water retained earnings to purchase and equip a K-3500 4x4 truck or take any other action relative thereto. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right. Hearing none. All in favor of Article P6, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article P6 is adopted unanimously. Article P7, to see if the town will vote to create a reserve fund for purchase ambulance account and to appropriate $150,000 from FY20 Reserve for Appropriation Ambulance Receipts account to be transferred to said account for the future purchase of an ambulance for the fire department, and B, to appropriate $100,000 from FY2020 Reserve for Appropriation Ambulance Receipts account to pay for repairs to the air or ladder truck or take any other action relative thereto. Motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor of Article P7, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article P7 is adopted unanimously. Article P8 is withdrawn. Article P9, to see if the town will appropriate $8,627.48 from free cash to pay for the cost to microfilm 14 years, 2006 to 2019, of town records recorded at the office of the town clerk or take any other action relative thereto. Motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor of Article P9, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article P9 is adopted unanimously. Article P10, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $130,741.77 from free cash to pay debt incurred in connection with the purchase of the town's streetlights or take any other action relative thereto. Motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor of Article P10, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article P10 is adopted unanimously. Article P11, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $46,000 from free cash to be added to the Budget Line 224 Veterans Benefits of the May 6, 2019 Annual Town Meeting or take any other action relative thereto.
Motion to pass over.
We have a motion to pass over Article P11. All in favor of passing over P11, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article P11 is passed over. Do we have a motion? We have a motion. Mr. Linum.
Mr. Moderator, when we enter Article II, we will be discussing a pretty significant issue in line item 175, and in order to do that, we first need to take Article, is it seven?
Yeah.
Article VII out of order to discuss the appropriateness of the request in Article II.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to take Article VII out of order. Any other discussion? All right. Hearing none. We need a two-thirds vote to do that. So all in favor of taking Article VII out of order and dealing with that now before resuming the regular order, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's unanimous. We'll take Article VII out of order right now to see if the town will vote to accept and approve the proposed amendment to the 1991 regional agreement of the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District, the district, which has been submitted to the Board of Selectment by the district's school committee as it may be amended up until the date of town meeting. A copy of the current version is on file at the town clerk's office, as well as being posted online at www.witmanma.gov/297/town-meeting-warrants, the proposed amendment, provided, however, that this vote of the town to accept and approve the proposed amendment shall be subject to and contingent upon the satisfaction of the following conditions: 1) The town of Hanson is the other member town of the district, shall by vote of the annual or special town meeting held on or before September 30, 2020, accept and approve the proposed amendment; and 2) The town of Hanson, as other member town of the district, shall by vote of annual or special town meeting held on or before September 30, 2020, approve the FY2021 budget adopted by the school committee for the district as voted at the school committee's meeting held on May 18, 2020, the FY2021 school budget, which approval may be by the appropriation of sufficient funds to pay the certified assessment from the district to the town of Hanson in connection with the FY2021 school budget or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Linum.
Mr. Moderator, a quick note for the members of town meeting. There will be a number of amendments today. Those amendments are a result of originally publishing the warrant before we knew the dates were going to change. So many of these things had to change, so please bear with us on the amendments. And on Article VII, I would simply wish to amend, to strike the Board of Selectment by District School Committee and insert in its place Whitman-Hanson Regional School District School Committee and voted by the school committee on July 15, 2020.
All right. So we have an amendment, a motion for an amendment, and a second. Any discussion of the amendment, of amending the article? All right. Seeing none. All in favor of amending Article VII, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right. Article VII is amended. Discussion of Article VII. Mr. Linum.
I'm reasonably certain that many people here have been following the discussion that has gone back and forth between Whitman and Hanson over how we assess the towns and what those assessment values should be. We became aware recently, the last two years, that a change was made to the amendment, to the assessment process by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education whereby each town is credited for its efforts in funding schools, and the Chapter 70 funding is different per pupil in virtually every town, because that formula takes into consideration the, about the tax burden of each town, the ability to raise money, and need. Once we became aware of this, the towns of Hanson and Whitman began discussions both with the towns and the school committee, because the preferred method for assessing each town is referred to as the statutory method. That is, the state says, here's the money you have, here's the portion that is credited to each town for its efforts, and then the balance of that budget is funded through an assessment based by pupil count. So over the last several years, it's become evident that we have been paying more than our fair share, at least according to the statutory system. This came to a head this year, and through a number of discussions, I won't call them negotiations, but suggestions and debates, the school committee proposed a budget assessment that would take the increase that is caused to the town of Hanson and divide it in half and say, as a way to move forward, Whitman will pay half, Hanson will pay half, and starting July 1, 2021, the assessment will be purely statutory, meaning that Hanson will be paying more under their maintenance of effort, and Whitman will be paying somewhat less. That's a moving target. From year to year, it moves based on the relative wealth of each community, and that is the revenue, the earnings in the towns, the tax assessments, the ability to raise taxes to your levy, all of those factors come into play. Now, we're at a standstill now, and because we're at a standstill, the Whitman-Hanson School District cannot set a budget for 2021, and practically speaking, neither can wait. It's a big part of our budget. And what we're asking is that town meeting consider and vote to allow the towns to modify the regional agreement to permit a 50% assessment to each town for this current fiscal year 2021, and beginning in 2022, which is our next fiscal year, the assessment will become statutory. I ask you to consider it, consider the needs of the community, consider the needs of our students and our schools, and I recommend that we approve this amendment.
Mr. Anderson.
The FinCom voted 1 to 8 to not support this article. In speaking for what remains a majority opinion, it is vitally important for this town meeting to know two key things. First of all, every member of this committee supports a quality education and is in total agreement with the budget that is presented to the town. What is not supported is the method that is being proposed to calculate the total assessment. If accepted, this article will effectively transfer more than a half a million dollars to pay Hanson's apportionment of the 2021 district assessment. The overarching reason this committee is opposed to this article is the very basic principle of what a finance committee's primary responsibility is to a community. That is the second key thing. This committee has an obligation to recommend a budgetary course of action that follows the law and is in the best financial interest to the taxpayer. What you undoubtedly will hear tonight will be a grossly oversimplified and emotionally charged plea to lockstep with the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District's misguided, one-way-to-win approach. What you need to hear are the facts. This is and always has been a financial decision, and is, for better or worse, for this town meeting to make. Through the chair, I would respectfully ask Finance Committee Member Kathleen O'Tina to come to the mic and very briefly explain the handout that is in the back of the warrant. Thank you.
Ms. O'Tina.
I'm Kathleen O'Tina, and I'd like to turn around and face you. I'm a member of the Whitman Finance Committee, and I live on Washington Street in Whitman. I'm going to start off by stating simply that if you want to vote the school budget, you have to vote for Article VII and the specific line item in Article II, line 175, as recommended by the Board of Selectment. Having said that, as the media outreach person for the Finance Committee, I was responsible for putting together the last piece of paper on this warrant. So if you can turn to the last page of the warrant, and thank you to whoever put this together for making life easy. It's the very last page. Without this amendment, the school committee only has two ways of apportioning the operating costs of the budget. The statutory method, which has been explained extensively in publications in the Whitman-Hanson Express and at multiple meetings, and if necessary, you can read the step-by-step process in this document, and that is, allows for the Chapter 70 money that is apportioned by town to essentially be used to create the assessment method, the statutory method of assessment. The last table will allow you to compare the different costs. The per pupil method was the method that was agreed to in 1991, when Whitman-Hanson became a pre-K through 12 regional system. That predates the 1993 Education Reform Act that introduced the infusion of state aid to offset the cost of education in the era of Prop 2 and 1/2. Without this amendment, the school committee's hands are tied. They can only apportion the assessment based on either the statutory method or the per pupil method. If you approve Article VII, and it was actually the superintendent of schools who, in a last-minute effort to come to a suggestion where the two towns could come to a meeting of the minds, he proposed this 50-50 compromise after listening to extensive discussions from probably mid-October through the middle of May. This 50-50 compromise allows the impact of the full statutory implementation of the budget, which is well over $1 million, to the town of Hanson, $1,140,000, to be split 50-50 for fiscal '20. Sorry, '21. Effective fiscal '22 and forever thereafter, the assessment will be done by the statutory method. So you have the information in front of you. If you take a look at the very last, the comparison, the very last table, what I've put together for you is the actual assessment for fiscal '20. Hanson's was 9.6 million, and Whitman's was 14.4. If we follow the agreement method, the per pupil method, which is what our member town would prefer, Hanson would pay 10.6 million, and Whitman would pay 15.9, really $16 million. If we follow the full statutory method, which takes into account the foundation budget of each town, the minimum local contribution calculated by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and comes up with our Chapter 78, the statutory method would have Hanson paying 11.8 million and Whitman paying 14.8 million. So from a pure dollar's point of view, as a Whitman taxpayer, you might say that it's extremely attractive to go full statutory. If you take a look down below, however, the percentage increases, the full statutory method would have Hanson's increase jump 21.86% in one year, and Whitman's would go up by 2.77%. If this town decides to support Article VII, it allows the school committee to use a proposed modified statutory method that eases the statutory method into place in two years, fiscal '21, and then in fiscal '22, it's full statutory. The percentage increase is about 16% to Hanson and 6.7% to Whitman, and the dollar figures are on the table above, on the lines above. So the Hanson assessment is 11.2 million, and Whitman's assessment is 15.367. So I trust that I've simplified that for you. If you vote yes on Article VII, it allows the school committee to apportion the costs in a 50-50 method, which is not currently a part of the regional agreement, and it ties the regional agreement to statutory method fiscal '22 and beyond forever. And I urge that you consider Article VII.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I may continue, so briefly, here are some of the facts. Fact one. In 2007, the Board of Education sent out a four-page memo to all regional school districts describing new regulations that clearly described the conditions for using any methodology other than statutory. Fact two, these provisions were not followed, including but certainly not limited to the requirement that town meeting must approve an alternative method annually by a majority vote. Fact three, the financial implication to the town of Whitman for not using the statutory method since 2015 is more than $4 million. And fact four, for you to consider, is that by voting yes on this article, you will be diverting $570,917 to the town of Hanson to apply to their fair share of the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District assessment. So the choice this year is yours. We respectfully ask you to vote no and send the budget back to the school committee. Thank you.
Further discussion. Ms. Connelly.
Thank you. Earlier tonight—
Please identify yourself.
Oh, my name is Rosemary Connelly. I live at 405 Franklin Street. Earlier tonight, I was mentioned in the speech where it said we had to choose between our heart and our mind. I had to make a financial decision that leaned towards what Rick was saying, but I also have to make a decision on where these consequences fall. We have to make a decision on, will they fall on children, and is this the time that they fall on children financially? This is not a sound choice, but it is a very, very different financial year, and this is a big consequence to fall on children. So I am still caught between those two places, but I hope people do consider if they do vote no, the consequence will fall on children.
Ma'am.
Beth Stafford, 21 Harvard Street. I always have respected the Finance Committee and the hard work they've done. It's a really tough job. I've never been wanting to be on it, even though I've been on other committees. But this time, I respectfully disagree with them. And I ask you to look if the shoe was on the other foot. If the shoe was on the other foot, how would you feel about if you were now going to have to pay $1 million this year? And we are not just, you know, here we are Whitman, but when we're talking about the budget, it's Whitman-Hanson, and we're supposed to be working together to try to find the means that we can do this together. And I think that Whitman has always made me proud and always worked for the best, for the children, and for the town. And as it said, right now, the proposal is that we go to full statutory next year. So it's just a compromise for this year, and it helps the other town to make things ready, to make things be able to get ready for what they're going to need to do in the future. Now, if you look and you hear Sosho Votek, "We get assessed every year." That's the statutory method. We've been assessed from Sosho Votek years for statutory. But what I'm asking is that we consider and please vote yes for Article 7. It's really, you know, this is really important so that we can move on, so that our superintendent and our assistant superintendent hopefully can get through this budget, because now they have to deal with the COVID-19 situation in the school district. This is putting a lot of work on the administration's back, and if we could alleviate some of that by voting yes tonight, I think it would be a great thing to do. Thank you.
Mr. Small.
Hi, Fred Small, 87 Hilltop Road, also Whitman-Hanson School Committee. Let's forget one second about the 50-50 compromise. Let's talk about education and the cost of education and what's at risk here. And no, let's just talk about it's for the kids, but it is. Okay? Every single child that goes to Whitman-Hanson is at risk at not getting the proper education. Never mind that we have to battle COVID. We don't know how we're getting them to school. We don't know how many kids are going to be in a classroom. We don't know if we're going to be remote learning, but we don't have a budget. And now, let's also think about our own pocketbooks. What's one of the first things that people ask when they call a real estate agent and they're looking at a different town? How's the school system? How are the schools? We need to take our best foot forward. We need to recognize that our sister town in Hanson, because we're in it together, and we've been in it together for years, they need our help this year. This is an affordable number for us to do. It does not break our budget. We can do this, and from here on in, it's written in paper, on ink, that we have to do statutory. If that's the cost to get us to the statutory method forever, I'm all for it, and I'm hoping everybody here is going to be for it too, for yourselves, for your property values, and most importantly, yes, for the kids.
Further discussion of Article 7. Yes, sir, in the back. Yes, sir, sir in the back. Did you have a question? You need to come forward to the microphone.
Propose a motion to call the question?
I'm sorry? We have a motion to call the question. That would end debate on the issue. All in favor of doing so, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
I think we're going to have to do a standing count on this one, folks. If you could, please, if the folks who are sitting on the lawn, please coalesce around one of the groups of chairs so that the tellers can count you. What's your point of order, sir?
Use the microphone.
We need a microphone.
You already recognized me to come to the microphone.
I'm sorry, that wasn't you who called for the motion to move the question?
No.
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead then. Go ahead, sir.
All right, here's my question. We're talking $570,000—
I'm sorry, you have to identify yourself, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. George Coffey, 897 Washington Street. This $570,000, we're going to, it's proposed that we just give to Hanson. Where's that coming from? Do we have to raise our taxes to do that? Are we going to be making cuts to the town departments to do this?
Mr. Linum.
The budget that has been presented tonight in estimating our total budget operation includes the assumption that we will adopt a 50-50 method this year and will then move forward to the following year. I just have to say something. The towns of Whitman and Hanson have been in a partnership since 1954. To the best of my knowledge, no one in administration in Whitman and no one in administration in Hanson had any idea that we were assessing in a way that was contrary to DESI's guidelines, which is the statutory method. It came to our attention. We realized pretty quickly that it was a large number. We met with, we had an ad hoc group from Whitman that met with people in Hanson. We had several discussions. We couldn't come to agreement. The region then formed a regional agreement committee to look at the agreement and come up with something that would work for everyone. What we're suggesting today, and I want to be clear, the Board of Selectmen voted three in favor and two against approving the 50-50 method. So this isn't something that's just a slam dunk where we can walk up and say, guys, this is it, just do it. You need to understand what the intricacies involved here are, and it isn't just writing a check. It's maintaining a relationship that educates our children for years to come. Now, I'm sure many of you have read in the local paper that Hanson is forming a committee to look at deregionalization. We recognize that that's a logical process to take. We also know and understand that deregionalization would shatter both towns. We are receiving aid, what is it, Randy, $6 million? We are receiving $4.6 million from the state above and beyond what we're entitled to get in order to hold us harmless as we move from year to year with Chapter 70 funding. When we stand alone as communities, the incentive aid's gone. It's simply dealing with the Chapter 70 money that we in each town will be eligible to receive, and then coming up for the difference. It's going to hurt both of us. It's also going to require dual administrations in both towns. It's going to require some type of reconfiguration. If we maintain a K through 12 in each town, one of us is going to have to build a high school, or we're going to have to make a deal that's not going to be to our advantage. What we're saying is we recognize it was incorrect. We've identified the issues. We're simply looking to move to the next step. I believe if we approve this article and we approve the budget, all debate's over. Next year, it's very simple. It is statutory. And I think it's worth it to resolve this issue rather than putting each town and the school district through the rigors that are going to be involved if we have to cut, what, $2 million from the budget to start the year? Come on, folks, these are our kids.
Yes, ma'am.
Cindy Landeville, 20 Harvard Street. I understand the children's factor of this, but as far as I'm concerned, Whitman has been duped for a long time. As far as Mr. Coffey questioned where this money's coming from, I would like to know exactly how the statutory method works. Does that count residential children in Whitman? Or kids that are going to Whitman schools, but some of them are coming over the border from Hanson? How does the statutory work? And if we go to remote learning, how does that affect the school department budget? Do we get money back from the budget because lights and heat?
Mr. Linum.
That's an interesting imagery, coming over the border. Are they slipping in at night?
Yeah.
Let's understand something. We're a region. We have Hanson kids coming to Whitman, but here's a news flash, we have Whitman children going to Hanson. That's the purpose of the region. I think it's really disingenuous to make that an argument. The argument is whether or not we're going to fund the region, and if you give me a minute, I'll tell you exactly what it's going to cost you in your tax bill this year. Using today's budget and assessments, the tax rate would go from— My mind used to work better than this. The tax rate would go from 1585 to 1603. The increase in cost on a $300,000 home would be $54.01, and that's for one year, and then it rolls back when we go to statutory. So for my bill, it's going to be $72.04. I would gladly write that check to settle this thing.
Mr. Anderson. Mr. Anderson's been recognized. Hang on.
So I just, I just want to quickly respond to Mr. Coffey's question, because it is important to not only think about this year, but it's important to think about next year. And we've had some discussions in the past two years, and we've talked about the very real possibility that we're going to be looking at an override next year. So that's something that the Board of Selectmen has discussed this year. The Finance Committee has certainly recognized the fact that our financial crisis here in Whitman has not gone away. So just, just two years ago, this town meeting transferred $800,000 out of stabilization to close a significant budget gap to pay our fair share of the district assessment. So we've made some other commitments. Last year, we brought in a consultant to advise the best way to plan for a sustainable budget. We formed a Proposition 2 and 1/2 override committee to weigh the pros and cons of increasing our levy capacity. We passed a debt exclusion to move reoccurring debt out of that levy. We brought in the Collins Center to help us formulate a capital improvement plan. And guess what? Hanson didn't help us with any of that. So what have they done? They have held this regional school budget process hostage for the past six months by looking for some way to get some relief from Whitman taxpayers. Well, here it is, typed out in front of you in this article. We have unknowingly compromised already. Let's use Whitman's taxes to pay Whitman's bills. I urge you to vote no on this article. Thank you.
Mr. Cullody.
We'll look at the Elaine School Committee. This isn't something like Hanson just said, one day, we're going to screw all of the Whitman town people. And also, we haven't really been losing money because we've been voting on this bad methodology for years, because we didn't know this other one was in place. All we're asking is one, one-year modification to get them over, because if you look at the laws and the way they recommended this to roll out, if we had caught this back in '95, it's a three-to-five-year phase-in. They're only asking for one. You know, that is, if this was the other way around and it came back to us, we would be bitching and moaning about it, for sure. You know, let's just vote this in, get it over.
Sir. Sir.
Chris George, 4 Shelley Lane. I also served as the citizen representative on the Operational Override Committee and the Regional Agreement Committee. This became apparent a few years ago. When I joined the Operational Committee, knowing about it, Override Committee, I went to the folks who appointed me from the, from the Board of Selectmen and said, knowing what we know, we have to push this forward. People might be surprised to, that I think this way, but I actually think the Finance Committee did the right thing in voting not to recommend this. They have one simple job, to look at this purely from a one-time budget perspective. But the Selectmen did the right thing. They did the right thing by voting to put this in front of you and to recommend this. We are a partnership. We need to show compassion. We need to show partnership. And we need to move to statutory without decimating the school budget. A vote no decimates the school budget. That's it, plain and simple, at a time that we can't afford it. We cannot afford to stay on a 1/12 budget. That is what's going to happen. We need to move this forward. We need to vote this forward. It's the right thing to do. It was said, if we had discovered this in 1995 and 2005, towns were looking at a three-to-five year phase-in plan. When we found this in 2016, 2017, and we finally understood what it was, we came together and we said, we need to move this forward. We can't afford to do it over the three to five years. The number's grown too big. At the same time, we can't afford not to approve this because our kids are going to be looking at huge classrooms. They're going to be looking at an education that already is suffering. We have the worst language program in the 31 cities and towns around us. We have no middle school language anymore. Gone. That's not coming back anytime soon. This 1/12 budget leads to a ton more cuts. This is the right thing to do. It's a good compromise. Both Finance Committees in both towns have voted not to recommend it. To me, that's a sign of a great compromise. Neither side is happy. That puts us where we're supposed to be, right? We should move this forward. We should take the vote. We should go ahead and approve it.
Mr. Small.
And I promise to be very brief. If we advance the 500 and somewhat thousand dollars, next year, when we go full statutory, how much of that do we get back? Because now our assessment's going to start that much lower. It's in effect being prepaid, so to speak. So it's not just writing them a check and walking away. We will see a return on that investment. Thank you.
Any further discussion of Article 7? Mr. LaBittina.
Randy LaBittina, 6 River Birch Circle Selectmen, and I also was the Chair of the Budget Evaluation Override Committee. I have lived, eaten, slept the assessment methodology now for a solid year. I look around and I see very few people that probably understand it the way they actually should, and, and that's really shameful coming into tonight. But the gentleman who just spoke, Chris George, Don Byers of the School Committee, Mr. Small of the School Committee. What I will tell you is that we've heard some negative comments tonight about the people of Hanson. If you know this situation, they are not our enemy. They unknowingly benefited from a very flawed process. We, we were on the other end of that. And it's egregious that we're there, and I have promised we will get accountability for that. That will not die if this passes tonight. It's just not going to go away. That being said, this is a very good offer. The ink on the back of this, the last page of this paper is black and white. The question is not black and white. It's not just numbers. It's far-reaching beyond that. It's lives of children that are depending us, depending on us to look out for them, to look out for their well-being and to make sure they get the benefits that we all had. I'm a product of the Whitman school system. I had tremendous opportunities growing up here. Your kids, your neighbors' kids should have those same opportunities. If this does not pass, we will be on a 1/12 budget through December. Do not believe the hype on social media. That's where it's going. It will decimate our school district. Financially, yep, if you want to stand behind that, that you're making the fiscal decision, okay. But in reality, it's a cop-out. You know what you're doing. You're not going to pass a budget. It's going to hurt our kids. And when the vote comes up, I ask you to watch that table and see who stands up and supports education and who doesn't. That being said, tomorrow night, excuse me, Wednesday night, the Chairman of the Hanson, from the Hanson side of the School Committee will be here on this field. I'm calling you out to stand up and fight for this budget. Do what you're supposed to do. I know one thing. There was some egregious errors made here, tremendous ones, that need to be corrected. But the people who have nothing to do with it is our quality educators and our kids. I urge you to pass this amendment.
Any other discussion of Article 7? Sir?
Bob Timble, 877 Auburnville Way. I was on the Finance Committee for over 20 years in a different town. Finance Committee did their job well. Thank you. I was on a Regional School Committee for a few years. The Regional School Committee did their job well. The thing is, and I hate to bring this subject up, but what's happening in Washington, D.C. today? We can't come to the middle. It's this side or it's that side. I've been in town government for over 20 years, and I learned to compromise. I think this is a compromise, and I wish everybody to vote in favor of Article 7. Thank you.
Further discussion of Article 7. Seeing none, I will call for a vote now on Article 7 as amended. All in favor of Article 7 as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 7 carries unanimously. Article 2. "To determine how much money the town will raise in appropriate for the general government, protection of persons and property, health and sanitation, public works, veterans' benefits, education, library, recreation, unclassified specifying what appropriation shall be taken from the receipt of a department or taking any action relative thereto." Do I have a motion? We have a motion in a second. I will now go through Article 2 in 25-line increments. And if you have a question on any of the line items, please shout question and the line number. Lines 1 through 25. Lines 26 through 50. Lines 51 through 75. Lines 76 through 100. Lines 101 through 125. Lines 130 through 150. Lines 151 through 175.
Question, 175.
175. Is questioned. Lines 178 through 200. Lines 201 through 225. Lines 226 through 250. Lines 251 through 263. Lines 400 through 425. 401. Lines 426 through 440. All right then, I have questions on lines 175 and line 401. Any others? All right then, we will vote the rest of Article 2 according to the Finance Committee recommendations, and once we do that, we will come back and discuss and vote individually on 175 and 401. So all in favor of adopting Article 2 with those exceptions, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 2 carries unanimously. Article 175, Mr. Linum. I'm sorry, line 175. Battery's dead.
No, we're not on yet. Thank you. I move to amend Article 2, line 175, to read $15,367,392.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Mr. Linum.
Folks, we just voted the article that tells us what we should be assessing for the schools. Please support this budget and get them on their way.
Further discussion of the amendment. All right then, we'll proceed on a vote then to amend line 175 to read $15,367,392. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 1, I'm sorry, line item 175 is adopted unanimously. Line 401. Who had a question? I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, we vote on the amended number. I'm sorry. Then we need to vote on, on the amended number. I'm sorry. So all in favor of then of, of approving line 175 as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 1, line item 175 is adopted unanimously. Line item 401.
Hi. Neil Gorman, 28 Court Street. We're going to approve the water budget, but I just want to point out that we're not being treated fairly. About 13 months ago, I believe it was June 2019, there was an issue with the Brockton water supply, and they sent out notices to everybody in Brockton, including my father-in-law and my kid's godfather, but they didn't send a single notice to anybody in Whitman. We're not being treated fairly, and the Brockton water that supplies us is basically just giving us the bum end of everything. Thank you.
Further discussion of 401? Sir?
250 Studson Street. I'm the Water Superintendent for the Town of Whitman. I'm not really sure what you mean by, we got stiffs by Brockton. We've got our, our water from Brockton, from Silver Lake, and it's been my experience that they treat us very well.
Further discussion of 401? Right then, all in favor of the Finance Committee recommendation on line 401, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Line 401 carries unanimously. Article 3. "To see if the town will vote to authorize spending limits for fiscal year 2021 for the following revolving accounts approved under the town's bylaws or take any other action relative thereto. Animal control, $5,000; council and aging, $10,000; library fines and fees, $20,000; passport and photo fees, $3,000; planning board, $75,000; police department, $20,000; recreation committee, $40,000." Do I have a motion? We have a motion in a second. Discussion of Article 3. Hearing none, all in favor of Article 3, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 3 is adopted unanimously. To see if the town, Article 4. "To see if the town will vote to amend the town department revolving funds by law by adding to Section 5 authorizing revolving funds," and there's a chart here, which I, it's difficult to read, but it deals with street lighting, receipts, and fees, and insurance claims for fiscal year 2021 and subsequent years. Do we have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. "And to limit spending from this account to $7,000 annually or take any other action relative thereto." We have a motion in a second. Discussion of Article 4. All right, hearing none. All in favor of Article 4, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 4 is adopted unanimously. Article 5. "To see if the town will vote to appropriate $521,421 from Superwater Enterprise revenue to pay for indirect costs to the general fund, such payment to reduce the amount of money raised through taxation for the fiscal year 2021 budget or take any other action relative thereto." Motion in a second. Discussion of Article 5. Hearing none, all in favor of Article 5, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 5 is adopted unanimously. Article 6. "To see if the town will accept Sections 3 to 7 inclusive of Chapter 44b of the general laws otherwise known as the Massachusetts Community Preservation Act by approving a surcharge on real property for the purposes permitted by said act that the amount of such surcharge on real property shall be 1% of the annual real estate tax levy against the real property commencing in the fiscal year 2021, and that the town hereby accepts the following exemptions from such surcharge permitted under Section 3e of said act. Property owned and occupied as a domicile by any person who is qualified for low-income housing or lower moderate income senior housing in the town is defined by Section 2 of said act and $100,000 of value of each taxable parcel of residential real property. The purpose of the act is for the acquisition, preservation, rehabilitation, and restoration of historic resources, the acquisition, creation, preservation, and rehabilitation and restoration of land for recreational use, the acquisition, creation, preservation, and support of community housing, and the rehabilitation and restoration of such open space and community housing that is acquired or created as provided by said act to determine whether the town will accept any of the exemptions from such surcharge permitted under Section 3e of said act or take any other action relative thereto." We have a motion in a second. Mr. Linum.
Mr. Moderator, again, due to COVID, we rescheduled the meeting. It is now fiscal '21. So on line 4, I would like to amend the effective date to read fiscal year 2022.
All right, we have a motion to amend in a second. Discussion. All in favor of amending Article 6? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The amendment is carried unanimously. Discussion of Article 6 as amended. Mr. Linum.
I'd have Lisa up here since she pioneered this thing, but the Community Preservation Act allows the town to establish a separate fund for various improvements that is generated by doing a, basically, it's a tax on a tax. For example, if your house was worth $300,000 and that's what we were taxing you on, the first $100,000 would be removed. Your taxes would then be calculated on $200,000, and then we would charge 1% of the tax bill. So in that case, if the tax bill was $4,400, we would add $44 to your tax bill. That money would be set aside for the sole purpose of community preservation and improvement. It's something that we brought forward years ago, and for some reason, we never acted on it. Over the years, the state has, has contributed as much as 100% of the money in the fund or as little as 11%. Lisa, the current is 20, 23%. So whatever we put in our savings account, the state will give us 23% more. It's something that, it, it doesn't have a huge impact on people at tax time, but over time, it... It's something that, it doesn't have a huge impact on people at tax time, but over time, it builds up, and we're able to use it for things that are community-related, such as the park, such as restoring town properties that have historic nature. And it's just an opportunity to get on the bandwagon that's already passed us twice. As Justin reminds me, this is the first vote. It then has to go before the public in a general election, and it will be on the presidential election, so it will also require a ballot approval. So this is something that really gets carefully looked at.
Further discussion of Article 6 as amended. Ma'am. You have to come to a microphone, ma'am. All right, Mr. Anderson.
The question, the discussion within the Finance Committee was extensive. We had the Assistant Town Administrator come before the committee on several occasions and send an enormous amount of information for the committee to consider. But at the end of the day, a 4-4 recommendation doesn't really help the voters decide, I wouldn't imagine. But in concurring with Frank, it is something that we've looked at, and we've looked at it for a long time. And, you know, the members of the committee who support it think it's long overdue. The members of the committee who do not support it have some questions regarding the tax implications.
Does that more or less summarize?
Thank you for your question.
Further discussion of Article 6. All right, then, hearing none. All in favor of adopting Article 6 as amended, say aye. Opposed? No? Article 6 passes. Article 7, to see if the town will vote to accept and approve the proposed amendment to the 1990, I'm sorry, we already did that one, didn't we? Article 8, we did do that one. Article 8, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $640,302 from the FY 2020 Reserve for Appropriation Ambulance Receipts Account, and to appropriate $133,702 from available free cash, said funds to be used to reduce the amount of money to be raised by taxation for fiscal year 2021 or take any other action relative thereto. We have a motion and a second. Discussion of Article 8. Hearing none. All in favor of Article 8, say aye. Opposed? No? Article 8 is adopted unanimously. Article 9, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $15,000 from free cash to pay for costs to engage a consultant to assist in conducting a search selection of a town administrator or take any other action relative thereto. Motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor of adopting Article 9, say aye. Opposed? No? Article 9 is adopted unanimously. Article 10, to see if the town will vote to petition our representative to the general court to file legislation to rescind Chapter 103 of the Acts of 1990, an act establishing a revolving fund to apply motor vehicle fines to police department expenses and salaries so that money received from motor vehicle fines on or after July 1, 2020 will be deposited in the general fund of the town of Whitman or take any other action relative thereto. Motion and a second. Discussion of Article 10. Hearing none. All in favor of Article 10, say aye. Opposed? No? Article 10 is adopted unanimously. Article 11, to see if the town will vote to rescind its prior authorization to maintain a reserve for appropriation ambulance account and close any funds remaining in the account after appropriations made at the June 22, 2020 annual town meeting to the general fund, and discontinue reserving said funds for appropriation or take any other action relative thereto. We have a motion and a second. Discussion of Article 11. Hearing none. All in favor of Article 11, say aye. Opposed? No? Article 11 is adopted unanimously. Article 12, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $2,788.20 from the Reserve for Appropriation Title V Loans Account to make fiscal year 2021 debt payments with any balance remaining from this appropriation, from this apportionation, fiscal end to be returned to said account or take any other action relative thereto. Moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor of Article 12, say aye. Opposed? No? Article 12 is adopted unanimously. Mr. Lyman. So we have a motion, then, to, for Article 13, is to act on the amended article which appears in your packet. We have a second on that. Any discussion? Let me just get that.
I'll simply state that for this and the next several articles, because we changed the date of the meeting, we had to amend the fiscal year. The dollar amounts and the purpose are not changing at all. It's simply language.
To read the amended article, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $18,425 from the fiscal year 2020 Reserve for Appropriation Motor Vehicle Fine Account to purchase a Harley Davidson motorcycle for police use or take any other action relative thereto. Second. All in favor of amending Article 13, say aye. Opposed? No? Article 13 is amended. Discussion of the amended article. Hearing none. All in favor of Article 13 as amended, say aye. Opposed? No? Article 13 is adopted unanimously. Article 14, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $63,000 from free cash to purchase a marked police cruiser or take any other action relative thereto. Moved and seconded. Discussion. All in favor of Article 14, say aye. Opposed? No? Article 14 is adopted. Article 15, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $9,231 from the Reserve for Appropriation Motor Vehicle Fine Account to purchase six tasers for use by police department or take any other action relative thereto. We have a motion and a second. And we have a motion to amend, which also appears in your packet, which simply inserts the language fiscal year 2020. All in favor of amending Article 15, say aye. Opposed? No? Article 15 is amended. Discussion of the amended article. Hearing none. All in favor of adopting Article 15 as amended, say aye. Opposed? No? Article 15 is adopted. Article 16, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $2,908.20 from the Reserve for Appropriation Motor Vehicle Fine Account to purchase six shotguns to upgrade current police department armament or take any other action relative thereto. And we have a motion to amend the fiscal year to just insert the fiscal year 2020 language into that same article. And a second. Discussion of the amendment. All in favor of amending Article 16, say aye. Opposed? No? Article 16 is amended. Discussion of Article 16 is amended. Sir?
I just want to point out, we just approved $20,000 for discretionary funds for the police, and if they want to purchase such items, they're welcome to do it. I'd be interested in finding out what the need is for all the extra shotguns, and how much need we've had in the past 10 years to use shotguns in our town. I'd be interested in knowing why Semlack, which we divert some of our funds to, doesn't have shotguns that we can use. And, yeah, I'd like to know why we have to buy this extra stuff. Thank you.
Chief Hanlon?
Timothy Hanlon, 55 Indian Trail. So we equip all of our cruisers with shotguns that are on the road. We've done that since I came on in 2000. I've had the need to take it out of the rack responding to calls, never actually had to shoot it other than in training, and I'd like to keep it that way. Right around 2001, 2002, we replaced the shotguns that we had. They were much longer. We now have tactical shotguns, and those need to be replaced. So we're not buying new equipment, we're replacing it. I'd rather have a piece of equipment and not need it than not have it and have a need for it. So that's why we made the request.
Further discussion of Article 16. All right, hearing none, then. All in favor of Article 16 as amended, say aye. Opposed? No? Article 16 is adopted. Article 17, to see if the town will transfer $10,000 from Reserve for Appropriation Motor Vehicle Fine Account to purchase a new centralized voice recorder for the police and fire department or take any other action relative thereto. And we have an amendment to, again, to insert the fiscal year 2020 language into it. All in favor of amending Article 17, say aye. Opposed? No? Article 17 is amended. Discussion of the amended article. All right, then, hearing none. All in favor of Article 17 as amended, say aye. Opposed? No? Article 17 is adopted unanimously. Article 18, to see if the town will appropriate $29,980 from free cash to license and implement software for the electronic permitting or take any other action relative thereto. Moved and seconded. Discussion of Article 18. Hearing none. All in favor of Article 18, say aye. Opposed? No? Article 18 is adopted unanimously. Article 19, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $132,745 from free cash to purchase and equip a 2020 35,000-pound GVW truck cab and chassis with snowplow or take any other action relative thereto. Moved and seconded. Discussion of Article 19. Ma'am.
Cindy Landiville, 20 Harvard Street, I have a question on Article 19 because Article P. 6 and Article 26 are also looking for money for DPW trucks. So does this mean three brand-new trucks?
Sir?
Bruce Martin, 54 Park Cabin, also the Highway Department Pocket and Tree Superintendent. Yes, we do have a future article coming up for a utility body truck that's to replace a 2003 truck. The truck is rotting away. We literally fill holes in the body with foam to be able to get inspection stickers. The truck doesn't have much life left. The other, the bigger article for the larger truck is to replace a 1999 International. It has a stainless steel sander body. You may remember last year, we did the same thing. We took, we bought a new cabin chassis. We took the stainless steel body off the older truck. They don't rot, they're stainless steel. We put the old body on the new truck. It works out great. This particular truck that we want to replace, the rear end fell out of it in the yard last year as we were coming around the corner to go out sand it. Literally. We had to bolt it back on. We can't be operating dangerous equipment like that. We do the best we can with this older stuff. It's a 1999. Appreciate if you support both the articles as they come up.
Further discussion of Article 19. All right, hearing none. All in favor of Article 19, say aye. Opposed? No? Article 19 is adopted unanimously. Article 20, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $355,055 in available Chapter 90 funds for the purpose of resurfacing and/or installing surface treatments, install sidewalks, and paint lines on various town streets or take any other action relative thereto. We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor of Article 20, say aye. Opposed? No? Article 20 is adopted unanimously. To see if the town will vote to appropriate $100,000 from free cash for the purpose of resurfacing and/or installing surface treatments and line painting to various town streets or take any other action relative thereto. We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor of Article 21, say aye. Opposed? No? Article 21 is adopted unanimously. Article 22, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $50,000 from Sewer Water Enterprise retain earnings to conduct a feasibility/design study for building and equipping a DPW facility to replace the existing town barn or take any other action relative thereto. Made a motion and seconded. Discussion of Article 22. Hearing none. All in favor of Article 22, say aye. Opposed? No? Article 22 is adopted unanimously. Article 23, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $50,685 from free cash to purchase and equip a 2020 Chevrolet K3500 utility body 4x4 truck with snowplow or take any other action relative thereto. Motion and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor of Article 23, say aye. Opposed? No? Article 23 is adopted unanimously. Article 24, to see if the town will vote to transfer $57,000 from free cash to make the following repairs/improvements to the fire station. Repair hose tower and convert to office space, $29,000. Repair concrete and entry grade, replace entry door and latches, $17,000. Relocate ice machine, $1,000. Interior painting of the building, $10,000. Or take any other action relative thereto. Motion made and seconded. Discussion of Article 24. Hearing none. All in favor of Article 24, say aye. Opposed? No? Article 24 is adopted unanimously. Article 25, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $35,000 from free cash to replace, repair the sidewalks at the Conley and Duval Elementary Schools and the Whitman Middle School or take any other action relative thereto. Motion and seconded. Discussion of Article 25. Hearing none. All in favor of Article 25, say aye. Opposed? No? Article 25 is adopted unanimously. Article 26, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $160,000 from free cash to purchase and install generators at the Conley and Duval Elementary School or take any other action relative thereto. Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor of Article 26, say aye. Opposed? No? Article 26 is adopted unanimously. Article 27, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $21,000 from free cash to reconfigure the existing Whitman-Hanson Regional High School Guidance and Counseling Areas or take any other action relative thereto. We have a motion made and seconded. There's an explanation there you can read. Any discussion of Article 27? Ma'am.
Cindy Landiville, 20 Harvard Street, I have a question. We were under such a tight budget, and we are paying 60% of the cost, if that's what I'm reading here, $21,000 to reconfigure the guidance department? May I explain, other than the cohesiveness? Are there private areas now for student counseling?
Mr. Small.
What it is, is to change the flow patterns so that there's a level of privacy that is now required as to when the school was built originally. So we'll be changing some of the flow patterns and reconfiguring things for better flow. It is required, and there is privacy issues involved, that we do need to do this.
Other discussion of Article 27. All in favor of Article 27, say aye. Opposed? No? Article 27 is adopted unanimously. Article 28 has been withdrawn. Article 29, to see if the town will vote to approve a one-year collective bargaining agreement between the town and local 1769 International Association of Firefighters, AFL-CIO, and to appropriate $59,889 from the Reserve for Appropriation Ambulance Receipts Account, FY 2020 receipts, to fund the cost of items of the collective bargaining agreement or take any other action relative thereto. We have a motion made and seconded. Mr. Lyman.
On this article and the next four that follow, in the end of last year, beginning of this year, we began negotiating contracts. The first contract that we settled was the fire department, and that's the article you're acting on now. The next four also were contracts that have been settled based on the, sort of on the settlement we made with the fire department. In each case, the contracts are rolled over, and there's a 2% increase to the employees covered under those contracts. There were minimal language changes, nothing that substantially changed the way people do business. And next year, we're going to be looking at all five contracts going forward for three years.
Further discussion of Article 29. All in favor of adopting Article 29, say aye. Opposed? No? Article 29 is adopted unanimously. Article 30, to see if the town will vote to approve a one-year collective bargaining agreement between the town and the Whitman Public Library employees, SEIU Local 888, and to appropriate a sum of money from free cash to fund the cost items of the collective bargaining agreement or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move to amend this article to replace a sum of money with the number $4,216 from free cash.
We have a motion and a second to amend Article 30. Further discussion of the amendment. All right, all in favor of amending Article 30, please say aye. Opposed? No? Article 30 is amended. Discussion of the amended article. Hearing none. All in favor of adopting Article 30 as amended, say aye. Opposed? No? Article 30 as amended is adopted unanimously. Article 31, to see if the town will vote to approve a one-year collective bargaining agreement between the town and the Whitman Police Association, IBPO Local 609, and to appropriate a sum of money from free cash to fund the cost items of the collective bargaining agreement or take any other action relative thereto.
Motion to amend a sum of money to read $50,420.
All right, we have a motion and a second to amend Article 31. Discussion of the amended amendment. Hearing none. All in favor of amending Article 31, say aye. Opposed? No? Article 31 is amended. Discussion of the amended article. Hearing none. All in favor of adopting Article 31 as amended, say aye. Opposed? No? Article 31 as amended is adopted. Article 32, to see if the town will vote to approve a one-year collective bargaining agreement between the town and the American Federation of State County Municipal Employees, AFL-CIO, State Council, 93 Local 1700, and to appropriate a sum of money from free cash to fund the cost items of the collective bargaining agreement or take any other action relative thereto.
Move to amend a sum of money Move to amend a sum of money to read $11,580.
We have a motion and a second to amend Article Thirty-two. Discussion of the amendment. Hearing none, all in favor of amending Article Thirty-two, say aye? Opposed, no? Article Thirty-two is amended. Discussion of the amended article. Hearing none, all in favor of Article Thirty-two as amended, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Article Thirty-two as amended is adopted. Article Thirty-three, to see if the town will vote to approve a one-year collective bargaining agreement between the town and the Office of Professional Employees International Union Local Six, AFL-CIO, and to appropriate a sum of money to fund the cost items of the collective bargaining agreement or take any other action relative thereto.
Move to amend Article Thirty-three, a sum of money to read $28,309.
All right, we have a motion and a second to amend Article Thirty-three. Discussion of the amendment. All in favor of amending Article Thirty-three, say aye? Opposed, no? Article Thirty-three is amended. Discussion of the amended article. Hearing none, all in favor of Article Thirty-three as amended, say aye? Opposed, no? Article Thirty-three is amended is adopted unanimously. Article Thirty-four, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $219,322.68 from the Reserve for Appropriation Cable Access account to fund PEG access services in accordance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter 44, Section 53, F3 and 3/4, or take any action relative thereto. We have a motion and a second, discussion of Article Thirty-four. Yes, ma'am.
Cindy Landeville, 20 Harvard Street, can somebody please explain this access, cable access account, and what it's going to do, and how this affects the school budget?
Mr. Linehan.
The town is served by Comcast. Our license agreement requires Comcast to pay 4.5% of their cable revenues to the town to support public access, including municipal access, educational access, and general public access. This money funds the Cable Access Committee and provides you with what we have here tonight for supporting this meeting and getting to watch it later on on YouTube or wherever else they broadcast. It is not tax money, it is money paid from Comcast to the town and then passed through to the Cable Access Committee to provide for their equipment and services. Has absolutely no effect on the community.
Further discussion of Article Twenty-four, Article Thirty-four. Hearing none, all in favor of Article Thirty-four, say aye? Opposed, no? Article Thirty-four is adopted unanimously. Article Thirty-five, to see if the town will vote to amend Article Twenty of the town's general bylaws by inserting, after Section 4B, the following section, Section Five, "No person shall be appointed to or serve on any town board, commission, or committee unless such a person resides in the town or establishes and maintains residency within the town within one year of appointment. Any person serving as a member of a board, commission, or committee who during the term of office for which appointed ceases to be a resident of the town shall immediately be deemed to have vacated such membership. The provisions of this bylaw shall not apply to ex officio members or non-voting members. Any non-resident members of the board, commission, or committee holding such membership at the time this bylaw becomes effective shall be exempt until the expiration of the current member's term." We have a motion and a second, discussion of Article Thirty-five. Hearing, I'm sorry, sir?
Peter Sword, Sportsman's Trail, I'm confused as to the need for this. If someone who lives outside the town wants to volunteer and the town is willing to take them, why do we need to exclude them? I think in general, many commissions and committees need talent. If someone, for some benevolent reason, I don't know, wants to help out and they don't actually live in the town, why would we exclude them? So I'd like to get some explanation why we need this.
Mr. Linehan.
The reasoning behind this bylaw is the town is made up of a number of boards and committees, and those boards and committees have a fiduciary responsibility to the town and frequently have long-reaching effects when they make their decisions. We feel that people who are in a position to make decisions that affect the community should have a residential interest in the community. Persons who are not residents can still serve on the committees, they simply can't be voting members.
Further discussion of Article Thirty-five. Yes, sir.
John Gold Rosen, 238 South Avenue, I'm chairman of the ZBA, but just speaking for myself. I also question the need for this. If it is, if a majority of the selectmen who are appointing most of the people on the committees, if a majority of them feel as a matter of policy that they don't want to appoint somebody who lives out of town, or as more often would be the case, retain as a member somebody who has been on the board, who has lived in town but moves out of town, if that's what the board of selectmen wants to do, they don't have to appoint that person. But I can't see tying our hands, you know, when there may be good reasons to keep somebody on a board who's valuable to the board. Thank you.
Further discussion of Article Thirty-five. Hearing none, all in favor of adopting Article Thirty-five, say aye? Opposed, no? Article Thirty-five is adopted. Article Thirty-six. We have a motion to waive the reading of the next seven pages and pass over this article. All in favor, say aye? Opposed, no? Article Thirty-six is passed over. Article Thirty-seven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer a sum of money to be added to the Town Capital Stabilization Account or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to amend Article Thirty-seven to see if the town will vote to transfer $300,000 from free cash to be added to the Town Capital Stabilization Account or take any other action relative thereto.
All right, we have a motion to amend Article Thirty-seven. Discussion of the amendment. All in favor of amending Article Thirty-seven, say aye? Opposed, no? Article Thirty-seven is amended. Discussion of the amended article. Hearing none, all in favor of Article Thirty-seven as amended, say aye? Opposed, no? Article Thirty-seven as amended is adopted unanimously. Article Thirty-eight, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer a sum of money to be added to the Town Technology Stabilization Account or take any other action relative thereto. We have a motion to pass over Article Thirty-eight. And a second, discussion. All in favor of passing over Article Thirty-eight, say aye? Opposed, no? Article Thirty-eight is passed over. Article Thirty-nine, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer a sum of money to be added to the Town General Fund Stabilization Account or take any other action relative thereto.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, I move to see if the town will vote to transfer $200,000 from free cash to be added to the Town General Fund Stabilization Account or take any other action relative thereto.
All right, then we have a motion and a second to amend Article Thirty-nine. Discussion of the amendment.
This is the first time in at least 13 years that we have moved to put money into our stabilization account. We have used capital stabilization from time to time, and we will continue to recommend putting money in there and taking it out. But general stabilization is what protects us when everything goes in a handbasket, and I think it's time that we pay more attention to building that stabilization account. That's what's going to protect us when we get really behind the eight ball.
All right, then, a vote then to amend Article Thirty-nine. All in favor, say aye? Opposed, no? All right, Article Thirty-nine is amended. Discussion of the amended article. Hearing none, all in favor of adopting Article Thirty-nine as amended, say aye? Opposed, no? Article Thirty-nine is amended is adopted unanimously. Thank you all very much for coming out tonight. Before I entertain a motion to adjourn, I would like to mention that Roberta Ellis-Drews, who was a public library trustee, has passed away recently, and there is now an opening on the library trustees, and if you're interested in that position, you can notify the town clerk or the board of selectmen's office if you have an interest in that position. Again, thank you very much for coming out tonight. We got it done, this has been the most unusual year ever. Again, when we're leaving, please wear your masks, practice social distancing, let's stay safe. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Moved and seconded, all in favor of adjourning, say aye? Opposed, no? We are adjourned.